Good morning, councilmen and those that are participating this morning. And also to those that are listening and watching, this is the Gaston City Council. And we're in our work session this morning. We will be doing, going over our agenda and then going over things that will come up later for the discussion. So there's no action that will be taken in this particular session. If you'll look at your agenda for today. We have a, we have two, three items under unfinished business. We have an resolution authorizing a special use permit for T-Mobile. This is located at 909 Bevou Drive in District Seven. We have a resolution authorizing extension of a lease agreement with the Gaston Warehouse. And then we have a resolution authorizing agreement with the MLFLW LLC. And this is the Phoenix Bass Fishing League that's going to take place June the 26th, 2021. So this is our agenda for today. And if you will go to your pre-council folder. We have our first item. In the pre-council folder is a resolution that's authorizing issuance of a restaurant retail license to AJ Bravo LLC and Dunn, located at 1729 Rainbow Drive, Gaston. Are there any questions on that item? Okay, we have another resolution. And this is a, this is approving an issuance of a retail beer and table wine license. And this is off-premise to Express Motors Partnership GP. And if this is Express Mart located at 2511 South 11th Street. I believe this is in District Five. And our next item. Is approving an issuance of a retail beer and table wine license. This is off-premise. And this is to Fresh Value Gaston LLC. And this is Fresh Value located at 2519 West Megan Boulevard. And this is in District Six.
Johnny, do you know what, when they might open?
It's tentative for around March, I think now. Maybe it'll be a little sooner, but they're working real hard in there trying to get this thing open. They're working every day. I mean, usually six days a week trying to get this up and going.
Good news.
Okay, and this, this is a resolution appointing members to the Gaston Cultural Arts Foundation. We have appointment of Bo Arthur to replace Kristi Knowles for a term expiring on January 1st, 2024. We have the appointment of Jessica Brown to replace Shane Ellison for a term expiring January 1st, 2024. And the appointment of Cody Robinson to replace Portia Foster for a term expiring on January 1st, 2024. Any questions on that? We have a authorize a tax abatement agreement for Cook's Food of Gaston. And I would request that Mr. Hooks. Give us information on that.
Thank you, Madam President. Cook Food has been in competition internally with their Georgia facility and facility in Gaston for a new production line. The city of Gaston won that production line. It'll be a $15,866,000 expansion. There will be 135 new jobs over the next three years. The average pay is $14.83 per hour. C schools will receive 50,000 plus per year. County schools, 19,000 plus per year. State schools, 9,500 plus per year. And then, of course, the county school system gets an additional one-time $16,000 because they have a half-cent sales tax to schools that can't be exempt. Production of occupational tax will be roughly $83,000 a year for $752,000 over a 10-year period. School, city school tax will gain roughly $507,000 per year. And Gaston total comes to about $1,250,000 per year over the next 10 years. So another expansion, this is the fourth expansion that we've brought you in the last three months. The other three were in automotive. This is in poultry. And we have another one that we're working on in the automotive sector, hopefully to come within the next couple of months. So that, Madam President, is, and we do need this passed today if possible. The way the tax exemption works in order for Cook to order their equipment, they need to go ahead and get their documentation done so that they can get all their tax exemption on the equipment. So if you, I would request that you and the council pass this today.
Discussion from the council members.
Mr. Hooks.
Does this not have to be a public hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Hooks, if you're comfortable doing so, I think that would be a great opportunity for you to speak to the process relative to how existing industry can receive some level of both tax and non-tax incentive if they meet certain investment thresholds.
Very similar to existing businesses. Has the same ability to capture those abatements as does new business that we're recruiting, assuming they meet those thresholds, which is a number of jobs, which is over 20 per year, over $12.50 per hour, 13. They just moved, states just moved it up. And a capital investment minimum of $2 million. And typically, we'll be notified by a company that they're looking to expand. Mr. Green or myself will go sit with that company and go through all the criteria, put together the paperwork, bring it to you, the council, and ask for approval.
So, so those, those standards and thresholds that you have to abide by in terms of being able to offer specific incentives, did you make those up yourself? Or were those established by the city council?
They, they are set by state standards, state statute.
All right. Just, you know, I asked those questions.
I'm sorry, Councilman Williams, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I asked those questions again because it's, I think in the, in the season that we're operating, it's important for, for people to understand accurate information versus misinformation. So, thank you, Mr. Hooks.
As our councilman, we, we handle every, every project the same way. I've been here almost two years now. We've handled every single project, both new and expansions, the same way. Mr. Green's been here almost 17 years. He assures me that we've not done anything different in how we've handled the process on these projects as we've handled the process for the last 17 years that he's been here.
Hey, David, just a couple of things. Number one, isn't there an additional criteria where it's gotta be a $2 million capital investment or some multiplier of your existing, the existing value of your facility? So in other words, if you're doubling the, the value of your facility, even if it's not a $2 million investment, that still qualifies, correct?
I don't know there's that, Jason. I'll have to look that one up. Bill said, yeah, if you're going to do an expansion, then you have to have at least $2 million or 30% of the original value of the property.
Gotcha. Yeah, I knew there was some other hook on the back end of that where it could be a percentage of the original value.
The original value goes to exactly what the property is worth at, at the orig, at originally purchased.
Gotcha.
And we, we qualify as a jumpstart county currently, which gives us some breaks on some things, but the standard for that is still basically the same.
Yeah. And just a blanket statement, I do want to make clear the fact that we're asking for this today. This is something that everyone is comfortable with because this is an existing business who's expanding. We're not talking about a new entity. So I, I think everybody's level of comfort with a proven, a package like this, same day is based on that. Just want to clarify.
And, and Councilman Wilson, we've also, this is not the first time that we've asked for unanimous consent on an expansion. We try to get them in and get them to accommodate the expansion for the companies. One of the problems that typically happens is the company will be a good way down the road with the expansion before they come to us and say, oh, by the way, we can get taxes. And, and of course, you know, at which point we start processing and they say, well, we really need to order our equipment. And so we do, we do try to get it done as quickly as possible to accommodate them.
And, and Mr. Hooks, one, one thing I'll highlight as relates to that process, and you can confirm or deny this, but many times when companies, by the time they get to you, the, the packet that they have to complete in order to submit applications for these abatements can be pretty complicated to lean on the IDA for a good level of, of technical support. Is that accurate?
I, I would say most, almost 95% of the documentation is done out of the IDA. So to say a good bit of the technical support would be an understatement. That's really what Mr. Green does here. And we've had him doing that almost on a full-time basis, quite frankly. The last two years, I've kept Bill pretty busy.
Yeah, well, but, but it also explains why a number of existing businesses don't, don't take the initiative, either because they're not actually, actually investing or because they're, they're failing to understand the process as it exists and as it's been established by the state. So, so again, you guys are available for anybody that, that, that wants to know more about that process, I'm sure.
Absolutely. Where we, like I say, the minimum requirements is where, I mean, we talk in numbers of growth that are big numbers and 20 million, 30 million. But for the average business guy, a $2 million expansion is a huge operation and a huge expansion. And those of you who are in business for yourself realize that, 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 you know, you go to the bank, try to borrow $2 million, that's, that's a big deal. So most of the, a lot of the businesses think they should be entitled to expansion, but because they just don't meet the statute, so the law, they're not. And, and therefore miss out on it because of that. And then there's some of the bigger businesses that may be doing a $3 million or $4 million expansion. They just don't want to have to fool with having to go through the paperwork to do that.
Madam President, I have a question for Mr. Hooks, please.
All right.
Can you explain or shed any light on how this expansion is related to the $55 million Cook Food new plant that you placed in Atala recently?
It's directly related. Cook is expanding. Cook is the third largest employer in the county behind Gaston Regional Medical and the County School Board. They have roughly 1,000 employees currently. With this expansion, they'll get up to another 1,100. And they're adding another 100 in Atala. So it's directly related with the transportation and logistics that fit into what their development plan is for the county. That was the, really the difference in moving it here versus Georgia.
So the infrastructure, I guess, I think if I remember right, the railway that is located in the city of Atala was critical to the $55 million investment there. So the grain can be trafficked in, I guess, from Kansas and Nebraska and out in the Midwest to come to Edgewall County so they can feed the, the poultry over in East Gas and at their location there. Was that accurate?
That, that's correct. They'll bring unit trains from the Midwest. And a unit train means the entire train will just carry grain. They'll, it's a very unique design technologically. Again, some of the things we've been doing in the poultry industry is trying to advance the technology that's moving through the county and, and how we upgrade the poultry business. And Norfolk Southern's actually designed the track for this. And it got, the train, interestingly enough, goes around the mill much like you'd see at Christmas, the little train going around the Christmas tree and unloads and goes right back out to the Midwest. So yes, we're moving up in the technology and infrastructure to, for the future of the poultry and ag business in general in Edgewall County.
And then I suppose the, the grain is moved from Atala to East Gas and by truck. Is that correct?
No, actually, actually it goes to the feed houses all over the six-county area.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's, that's good to know. So it's a.
So it's to the independent, what, what we would think of as the independent growers with chicken houses.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good to know. I think I've seen a map recently. I think Jason actually sent it to me, a, a kind of a bird's eye view map of Alabama and poultry locations. And, and I didn't realize the heaviness of poultry in about a five-county, six-county area that Gaston's a part of. Just haven't been studying that, you know, it's a lot to look at. That's not part of what I've.
Yes, we're. If I'm not mistaken, DeKalb County may be the largest poultry grower in the United States, I think.
I think that's correct, Councilman Wilson. And, and Councilman back there are, Alabama is second only to Georgia in poultry globally. There's, one of the things we've done, and, and I didn't mean to get off on this, but, but one of the things we focused on as a targeted industry in Edgewall County for the IDA and Gaston has been food and farming, not just processing business, but actually food and farming. And that takes it from the smallest, the wine companies, we hit two wineries we have here all the way to the poultry processing from, to big, huge operation. But there are 93 businesses in Edgewall County that's SIC code falls under the agricultural SIC code. People, by far, agriculture is the largest operation next to healthcare in Edgewall County. And it's pushing healthcare for the largest industry. We, we, the days of the steel mill and Goodyear being the largest industry in this county is, is just history. I mean, it, it's, we're currently, the largest we have is poultry.
Good information, thanks, David. I appreciate that. I, I think it's always good to get this out. And you know what just dawned on me? I think the city funds the IDA and the $55 million plant that is placed in Atala is helping to, helping commerce in, in the, in the counties that touch us, like St. Clair County, I'm assuming DeKalb County. I'm not sure all, all the counties that would have poultry operations in their county. But, but Gaston is, is working with our sister cities and our sister counties in this process and have been for a number of years. I, I think that's, that's in, in the, as Councilman Williams pointed out, in the climate that we're, that we find ourselves in, I think it's good to, to be transparent and to let people know exactly what we do as a city that helps not only Gaston, but help surrounding cities and surrounding counties.
Yeah, Councilman, that, we, we are very grateful with the IDA for the city of Gaston's funding of the IDA. And note, there's no question. But the two years I've been here, I've never been told not to help another city. As a matter of fact, the mayor and his staff and, and each of US council members have encouraged us to support every city in this county, which we have done. And you make a valid point because we've centered the industrial sector of the ag business here. We're affecting St. Clair, DeKalb, Calhoun, all the growers across northeast Alabama.
Thanks, thank you.
I have a question. Oh, go, go ahead, Madam President.
No, go ahead, mine will be last.
Okay, I, what, what I wanted to ask is, was the, this is about the same process you use on all of the different industries, correct? And this is the first we've heard of it today when you brought it to us. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
That, that's it?
Thank you, Councilman Worthy.
Okay, I'd like for Ms. Nelson to address, I think Mr. Cannon brought, brought a question up as to was this in line with a public hearing? So I would like for her to address as to why this is not, a public hearing is not required. So that can be cleared up too.
Well, as Mr. Hooks mentioned, for the threshold limits for entering into tax abatement agreements or applications by companies, the cities are also ruled by state statute in what requires public hearing and what doesn't. Occasionally, the city of Gaston requires its own public hearing process as we do for alcoholic beverage licensing. But most of the time, it's a public hearing requirement that's mandated by state statute as well. So one is not required in this instance.
All right, thank you. Is there an objection of bringing this up today? If not, I'll bring it up since it's in District One.
Thank you, Madam President.
Our, our next item and our, our last item is a resolution authorizing agreement with Lexipole. This is an LLC to provide professional service relating to updating and certification of the police department policies and procedures. And if, Captain Jackson. Hadn't seen you so long, Captain Jackson. I almost forgot your name and who you were.
Lee, there should be a request to start video on your screen.
Can you hear me?
Can you see me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I think you can go ahead, we can see you.
Do you folks have any questions about this that I can answer? Or I'll try.
Is this certifying certain police officers or is it a policy change within your policies?
Yes, ma'am, it's going to be an overhaul of our policy. Accreditation is down the road across the, across the country because of recent events and stuff. And we're just trying to get ahead of the curve on everything. Like with, the, the police department has been ahead of the curve. We were always recording before that became a thing. We were using body cameras before that become national. And we're just trying to get ahead of the curve on the, on the accreditation.
Well, I guess, and the other thing I need to add is that what are, what are the changes? Are, are there any changes within your certification that you are going to do that you haven't been doing?
Yes, ma'am. Well, it's going to be basically an overhaul of our policy manual. And they have, they'll write our policy manual for us. There's 106 policies that pertain to the state of Alabama. We can pick and choose which one of those 100, if we want all 106, we can take all 106. If we want any percentage of that, we can take, take those. Some of our policies, say like use of force, vehicle pursuits, those have been recently updated. Some like grooming standards, social media policy, things like that, they have not been updated in the time that, they either don't exist or have not been updated in the time that I've been here since 97.
Captain Jackson, has this group done any work for us before?
No, sir. Not to my knowledge, but it's, it's a group that Oxford Police Department is going with, Edgewall County Sheriff's Department is going with them. A lot of agencies across our state, a lot, a lot of the more major agencies are going with Lexipole.
Who, who within the department will review their work once they've completed and made their work and made recommendations?
It's, it's going to be a collaboration. It was, it will be the command staff and, and the chief of police will work with these folks to, to, for our policies.
Any other questions?
Yes, we do need it today.
I think y'all need that today, is that right?
Yes, sir, we do need it today. We would like to get started in February. This is not going to be an overnight process. Like I said, there will be many meetings between the Lexipole staff and between our command staff to sort of tailor the policies the way that we need them to be for our police department.
Captain. I, I know you said something about social media, but is there, is there going to be a policy in there as to how you all monitor social media as it may affect our particular area as well as nationwide?
How, with social media, how's it going to affect, what, what, how's it going to affect the department versus the public? Social media policies?
Yes, it, yeah, the, the social media policy will be for the police department, for our officers, what they, you know, it would be what they can and can't do. You know, that's, that's ever-changing. We don't want to limit someone's freedom of speech, but they do work for the city of Gaston too.
Any other questions by any other council?
Madam President, I had one, it's just kind of an observation. This, this, it sounds, I'm, I'm, the first time I've read it is right now and I'm reading it on my screen over here. So there's a lot to read, it's about 18 pages, so I won't be able to do it immediately. But Captain Jackson, is there any process or is there any way? I don't think the council needs to micromanage the police department by any stretch. But in six months after this starts or a certain time, can you, is there a way to come back to us and maybe give an overview or a report of, of the changes made? And, and what that means for, not only for the police department, but for the, but for the citizen?
Yes, sir, absolutely. We believe in complete transparency in the police department. And like I said, it will be a continuing process. I don't believe it will be implemented within six months. It's probably going to take a little bit longer than that, Councilman Back. But absolutely, we'll give you updates as often as you need.
Sure, you know, not any kind of weekly or monthly type things. It would just, it sounds like this is a pretty good undertaking. I'm noticing there's a, like a $30,000 fee upfront, $30,800 and a $25,000 annual fee thereafter. I'm trying to get back to the contract to see, is that, is there an end date on this? Or it's just annual renewal? So I guess it's 25,000 to 19. And I guess if, if y'all are happy, then every 12 months, we'll pay them another 25,000?
Yes, sir, it is an annual renewal. And with that, like I said, they constantly update with case law. They'll update our policies for us. And our personnel will be trained on those updates through training, daily training bulletins, which can be done electronically through their computers that they have in their car and their offices.
I think this is a very good move. I mean, with the, in the climate of, of our country today, I think the communications and the outreach to the public that this proposal outlines and the resources it gives you guys, I think are unquestionably needed and very accurate. And so I, I appreciate you guys looking into it, stepping out and taking the time to research and to collaborate with other police departments, law enforcement agencies to bring the best possible programs like this to the, to the city. So thanks a lot.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Hey, Captain Jackson, and this, this may well be within their scope of work. But, you know, the window is closing very quickly on even a group like this having the ability. But, you know, the window is closing very quickly on even a group like this having the ability to address behavioral and conduct related policies and, and rules and procedures. So, so what I would encourage you to do, and again, this is not a mandate, just a suggestion, that, that we put that on, on their radar early. Because obviously, there's a, there's, there's a change politically that may make that difficult in the, in the coming months. So, so again, you know, behavior related policies and conduct related policies. I would ask that we, that we take an opportunity now to go ahead and, and address those where we can so that we can make sure that we get the changes that we're looking for.
Absolutely, I agree with you 100% Councilman William.
Now, Captain Jackson, one thing, this is probably going to be one of the most important things we need to do going forward to accreditation of the police department. Isn't that right?
Yes, sir, it is.
With the behavior stuff that the councilman was talking about, wouldn't you have to also go and redo the civil service board rules?
Well, they did look at them. Yes, sir, and that's, that's above my pay grade there, Councilman Worthy. Me and yous worked together a long time, you know that. It will work, it, it'll work within the confines of both the policy and the civil service board rules.
All right, thank you, Captain.
Yes, sir.
Is there an objection for this to come up today? Councilman Worthy, would you bring it up?
I would be happy to, but I didn't get the folder, so I don't have the resolution in front of me.
Okay, okay.
Councilman Worthy will try to forward that to you by email.
All right, thank you.
You'll have it by the time.
By the time we have council meeting, you should have it.
But, but how long is it going to take him to read it?
That's.
Watch yourself, though.
All right, then, Councilman, Councilman William, will you bring it up? I, I tell you, I, I'll suggest this. Councilman Worthy, you're first on my radar. If you don't have it, then Councilman William is your backup.
Okay, that'll work.
All right.
I had already talked with Alba about it, we was texting and she said it was sent, but for some reason, I just didn't get it on Friday.
Okay.
I just seen, I forwarded my email to you, so hopefully that will come to you momentarily there.
All right, thank you.
Is there, that's all in our pre-council folder? Is there anything else to come before the council before we take a break for the regular council meeting at 11:00? If not, we'll take a break and come back at 11 o'clock for our regular council meeting. All right, we'll get started this morning. Good morning, I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council. And we're today, uh, meeting by teleconference. Today's council meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and can also be viewed later on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse and the city of Gaston YouTube. This means, this meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Alba Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Cannon?
Here.
Come on.
And Councilman Reed? We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask President Toles to lead the invocation today.
As we approach your throne, our heavenly Father, we know that even though we're on Zoom, that you are omnipresent. And we pray, Father in heaven, that you will be with us as we transact the business of the Gaston City Council. I come this morning praying for our city, praying for our state and praying for our nation. Heavenly Father, we pray for those members and families that have been affected by the pandemic. And Father, we pray for all of us and we just give you all the praise. This is a good day and we just thank you for it in Jesus's name, amen. I'd like to begin today's meeting with the update from the MEA Emergency Director, Deborah Gaither.
Good morning, how is everyone?
Great this morning.
Well, um, we'll, we'll go ahead and start with the numbers as we normally do. And Edgewall County is still in an overall risk assessment by the Department of Public Health as severe. We are still under, for our 100,000 category where we're looking at cases that are up, we are extreme. We are also at a critical level on our test positive rate. At this point in time, based on the COVID Act now, we're at 30.6% COVID test positive. ICU capacity is critical, it's at 97% right now. So we do have a few beds right at this minute. As I've said many times before, that's an ever changing number by the minute. And sometimes, you know, it's, it's just by the second. We are also looking at deaths at 168 right now. We're waiting on 23 of those to be confirmed. But in talking, like I said, talking with the coroner last week, he's, he is really lost his mind right now and that's, that is sad to know. When you look at the Bama tracker that we have on the website too, it shows that we are a few different numbers than what I just called out to you. The reason for that is, we talked about that last week, the data dump that we had in several categories where labs had been off for the holiday or behind in reporting. And a lot of those came in at one time. So there'll be a week or two more here that we will still be looking at that issue. Then also, there's a new input on Bama Tracker where you can see the vaccination update. I'd ask you to go ahead and look at that sometime. It's also on the information page of our G E C E M A dot com page. So COVID information, COVID-19 and COVID information pages. Look at those and you'll see new information there. The, the schools are reporting again, so the Alabama K through 12 school COVID data is updated once a week from our local schools. Now, you can go in either on Bama Tracker or in the same location on our webpage and type in the specific school or school district that you're wanting to look at. We're elevated right now. And we know, you know, we know we've just got one week's worth of reporting. The students have only been back a week. Already up to 84 positive tests in all of our school systems, the three of them put together. And then a few of our private schools are on that list also. Other information people are still wanting to know about vaccines and where there'll be new clinics. We don't have any new clinics listed at this time. The only other tentative two that we have going on are the second dose clinics. So those that received their first dose on December the 29th will receive their second dose on January the 27th at the health department from 8:30 to 3:30. You should receive a text or a phone call to verify that with you. And they may give you a specific time, but they're going to be working with those that are on the 29th. We're also working on, that's not a bird, I'm sorry, let me, let me mute that. We're also working on the second clinic for those that received their vaccine on January the 7th, verifying the location, coming up with a different way to bring people in and out. Arm bands that are colored with times on them so that we can avoid some of the traffic confusion and hazards that we had last time. That'll, that will call for us to do several, several days of added preparation work to work with our citizens to give them that armband and to make sure they understand that they only come between these specific times. But we're going to try to do a lot of education on that and get that information out. But we look for that to be probably the first week of February. Does anyone have any other questions on vaccinations?
Yes, Deborah, do you know how many drugstores or pharmacies are giving them out in Edgewall County now?
No, we don't at this time. I know that Super B still had some as of this morning. Now, they may not have some by lunch, you never can tell. But everyone should call their pharmacy that they normally use and ask them, you know, if you have one or if they're taking a waiting list for when they do come in. That will be a huge help in planning for the future, especially planning for those local pharmacies. So they'll know a number of those that are interested in getting one at their location.
I know that most of them has a waiting list now, you just got to get your name on the list and when your time comes up, they'll call you, you know?
Right.
Basically what I've been hearing from everybody.
And you have to keep in mind that the pharmacies that are participating, that are able to do that, had to be pre-approved. And they also had to have the way to store it, which is the sub freezing cold refrigerator. It's just a small refrigerator, but it was a large cost. And now there's a shortage of those refrigerators. So there's not a lot that are being added here in the last little bit.
If there are no other, any quest, any other questions, we want to thank Ms. Gaither for the update. And thank, thank your workers for all that you do for the county.
I would do that, thank you.
Okay. We will continue with our agenda for today. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session that was held, city council meeting on January the 12th.
So moved?
So moved, clear.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of January the 8th through the 14th.
So moved?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
All right, Mayor, do we have any proclamations? Okay. Our unfinished business, we have three items for unfinished business. The first item is to authorize a special use permit to T-Mobile. And this is to modify, the modification of their equipment at the existing wireless telecommunications facility. And it's located at 909 Bevou Drive. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, clear.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
All right, our next item is to authorize an extension of a lease agreement with the Gaston Warehouse and Company. And this is for a 60-day extension of a lease for a portion of building T4, Section A, B, and C. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved?
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item and last item is an agreement authorizing with MLFLW LLC. And this is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament at Crusoe Landing. And this is for June the 26th, 2021, and the amount is $1,500. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Uh, new business, we have, is there any new business? Yes, we have one. And the first, we have, the first one that we have is a request by the Industrial Development Authority. And this is to authorize a tax abatement agreement with Cook's Food of Gaston. And I ask for unanimous consent to bring this up today.
So moved?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Consent has been granted for consideration today.
I move for the adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
I'd like to request, thank you, I'd like to request, is Mr. Hook still on the line? If he's, if he's not on the line, I was just going to give a little, according to.
He's here, Dr. Toles.
Okay, if you will just give us. If you will, uh, just give us, uh, sort of figures on the, the amount of the expansion, the number of jobs, and, uh, even if you want to give how much, um, school systems would benefit from it, then I'd appreciate that, please.
Yes, ma'am, Madam President, the capital investment on this one is $15,866.07. Uh, we were in competition with Georgia for a line of which we won. Uh, there's 135 jobs in the expansion over the next three years. The pay is $14.83 average per hour. The city schools will receive $50,000 per year. County schools will receive $19,000 per year. State School Board will receive $9,500 a year. Uh, city will receive $83,000 in occupational tax annually. Uh, and all that combined, uh, occupational tax over a 10-year period would be 752,000. City school tax over a 10-year period would be 507,000, uh, giving you a total, uh, for the city and the city schools of 1,259,810,014 cents, based on current projections.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have any other, uh, items for new business? Councilman, will you?
Yes, Madam President, I do have, uh, one item that I'd like to ask, uh, for consideration today. Uh, it is a, is a resolution authorizing agreement with Lexi Paul LLC to provide professional services relating to updating and, uh, certification of the Gaston Police Department policies and procedures. Again, I'm asking for consideration today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Sorry, yes.
He's on the beat somewhere.
I thought, I thought we lost you there for a minute. Uh, Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
We have unanimous consent for immediate consideration today.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Okay. We're not, are there any department reports, committee reports, a board reports? We have remarks by the council and the mayor. Uh, Councilman Worthy, since you're leaving us early?
I don't have anything today, thank you, though.
All right, Councilman, uh, Cannon?
Yes, the only thing I have today, Ms. Toles, Council President Toles, is, uh, I made a mistake during, uh, pre-council about fresh value. I said it was gonna up, up in, uh, March. I just got a note here from Lisa Osborne that said they're planning on opening up February the 1st, and that will be something interesting and exciting for Alabama City. We don't have a grocery store, and now we'll have one opening up February the 1st. I just encourage all the, uh, people who are on Park, Alabama City, and all around, just to go over there and help us out this time. Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilman Reed?
Yes, ma'am, I hope Barbara's listening because we've been waiting on that grocery store too. Uh, I want to thank the Edwah County Health Department. They had the best plan I have ever seen as far as bringing people in, parking, and so on and so forth. I called, uh, and they answered the phone, and they said, if you'll give me your name and number, I'll call you back within an hour, which they did, told them the time to be there. Um, I was a little bit reluctant when I got there, but when you go in, in the back, it's, uh, they've got all kind of barriers there to direct you in, and just exactly on the time that they told you to be there, you're taken in. Everything was smooth all the way through, uh, never been greeted and handled so well. Those, those people were extremely nice, uh, right down to the shot. I think Mark told them I was a city councilman, and three of them came at me with a needle, but luckily only one hit me, so everything was fine. But really, they, they did a good job over there, it was a good experience. I had no, um, effects from it, whatever. So anyway, a big thank you to those folks again, I really appreciate it. And at the time you're there, last thing, you get the shot, and then they tell you and give you a card when to come back. It's exactly 30 days from that date, same time. So I thank them very much.
All right, Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything, Madam President, thank you.
All right, Councilman Back?
Just want to say a continued thanks to our, uh, folks at the EMA, for Gaither and her staff, uh, for all the work and times and efforts that they're putting in. Uh, you know, it's a moving target, uh, I was listening when she was speaking, and I think a lot of her information she gets from the state, and then she has to turn around and disseminate that information down to the, down to the people. And that's not an easy job, especially when there's not necessarily a manual for, for this pandemic, uh, for what she's having to do. So thank you all very much, workers, uh, people that, I see comments on social media from friends of mine that work in hospitals. They are, you know, this has gone on so long, I think it can kind of get watered down a little bit, but for those that are in it, it doesn't get watered down. It's a very real pandemic, and, uh, a lot of life and death situations that they look at hourly, not just daily, but every hour. So, uh, gratitude of heartfelt thanks to those that are doing that, our, uh, emergency personnel, our fire department. You know, I think they're still in the process, they get a call, they roll up to a house, they have to put on, one person puts on the protective gear, goes inside the house and assesses the situation. So for those people, it's still a very real, every hour, every day, uh, critical pandemic, and they have to protect themselves so they can protect their families. So again, a, a debt of gratitude goes to our first responders, our police force for, uh, they're in the same situation where they have to interact with the public, uh, and so it's, it's still a very volatile situation. And over a period of time, it does have a way to kind of, you, you almost get used to it, and it's, and it, but, but, but they can't. They have to be on their guard 24 hours a day. So just, just thank you to those that are, that are doing that for all of us, for our whole, uh, county. And, uh, that's all I have, Madam President.
Uh, Mayor Guyton?
First of all, I want to say, along with Johnny, about the grocery store in Alabama, and Cook Foods, um, so proud that's going out really good. Uh, when I first was in office, they moved here, and, uh, early on, had a little issue with the odor, and they said they would take care of it, and they did, and we've never had another phone call about it. And that's a really, really good company, and we're proud to have up here.
Councilman, will you?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, do want to echo the mayor's sentiment regarding, uh, our existing, uh, partner, uh, in Cook Foods. Uh, we've, uh, we've been able to partner with them more than once now, and, uh, we're excited to see, uh, operations grow there. Um, timing couldn't be better because it's a great opportunity to, uh, to help people understand how, how the process works, um, where the origins of that process are, and, uh, and why it's important, uh, because it's the law that we, that we follow it, uh, to the letter. So, so again, I do, do appreciate that, and I'm, I'm excited about what that means for, for the city. Uh, do want to also send, uh, send kudos out to our, uh, Police Department. Uh, as you guys may have, uh, have noticed, we, we voted on, uh, an agreement with, uh, Lexi Paul, a little bit over $30,000, um, to, uh, to come in and, uh, provide a scope of services that includes, um, policy manual review and recommendations, uh, daily training bulletins, web-based delivery of their, uh, of, of their policies and procedures, uh, reporting, and, uh, and ensuring that our operating, uh, procedures and, and, you know, again, in layman's terms, those are the, the rules that govern day-to-day how police officers function, to ensure that they're in line with the law. Now, that's important, uh, not just because it's a good thing to do from a business perspective, but it's also important in light of the climate that we're functioning in right now, uh, for, you know, it, it definitely puts to bed the notion, uh, that the Police Department is not taking seriously, uh, an opportunity to review their policies, policies and procedures. Uh, the, the folks that support Lexi, Lexi Paul are public safety and law experts and professionals, uh, with over 8,100 clients. So, so again, it's not like it's a fly-by-night group that was started, uh, that was started by somebody just yesterday. This group's been helping municipalities for years, uh, and I don't have a stake in them at all, uh, so I have no reason to talk them up. I just think that, uh, again, that the, the, the met, that, that, that taking on this endeavor now, uh, is probably more meaningful than it, it's, it's been in other years. So again, thank you to the Police Department, and, uh, special shout-out to Captain Jackson, uh, for his update to the council during the, during the work session. Uh, it's evident that he has a good grasp of the information, and, uh, we look forward to the updates going forward. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, uh, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So move?
This meeting is adjourned.